I've always wanted to just.
Do it.
Yeah, I've never needed.
The woman was just too nice.
A lot of trees around here.
We're very serious about.
Judge us.
You're good.
We're good?
Yep.
Judge, you can judge.
I got you a minute or two.
That's perfect, thank you, Harlan.
Is the internet slow today or what?
Yeah, well, you know, Katie's doing the election of her president's chair and Storm took her, all of her hotspots out.
Well, I can't get it pulled up here.
Think you'll be anticipating a bad like month? Alright, what's on again? Alright. Yeah. Did you want, did you want to get the electricity? That'd be electricity.
No, I've got electricity thing, this is not a bad thing. For the insurance.
Um. Alrighty, I'll call this meeting of the Young County Commissioners Court to order, let the records show it is nine thirty-one AM and all five members of the court here are present. We are streaming live on YouTube and if you're watching and you'd like to make a comment, you may call in at nine four zero two two one two one oh seven. If you're able, please stand for our invitation to Mr. Rogers that we honor today.
First prayer, good Father, we just ask you to be with us today. Just ask you to bless all those that are present, watch over us as we go out in harm's way. Father, we just want to thank you for the rains that you've given us and just ask that you bring more at a time they matter and keep cooler temperatures. Father, for those that lost loved ones, we just ask you to comfort those and those that are sick and ailing and trouble, just let your healing handle them. Father, as we come to this meeting, we just ask you to guide and direct us, give us wisdom as we face issues for this county to better our county and communities. Father, forgive us as we fail you. Work your will in our lives, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thanks, we appreciate that. Alright, we'll move to public comments. One public comment that I have is today is election day. Please, if you have not voted, please go out and vote. We have a state senator runoff and we have a commissioner precinct three runoff and so hopefully everybody will go out and vote for that. Um, nothing, Tech Dot is soliciting comments right now for their road plan for two thousand twenty-five and twenty-eight. If you're interested in participating on that, get in touch with me, I can get you a link to participate in that process. Any other public comments? I see none, so we'll move on. We'll move to item number four, which is to consider the, commit, the, consider the clerks' minutes from our previous meeting, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We have a motion from Commissioner Crestwell to accept the minutes as presented, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Wiley, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We'll move to item number five, consider the treasurer's financial report and updates on securities pledge, treasurer mom?
Tell the board.
Alright.
We just have a donation to accept.
So then we'll discuss accepting a donation from the Red Top Cemetery Association of Young County for cemetery mowing to the Young County Sheriff's Department, they're donating five hundred dollars, do we have a motion to accept that?
Please.
We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Crestwell, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We'll move to item number six, consider the auditor's budget amendments and vouchers payable.
Vouchers payable, total today is one hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine oh seven eleven and out of the general fund is fifty-six thousand six oh one eighty-eight and there is.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion from Commissioner Crestwell, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero with Commissioner Wiley abstaining.
Also have an estimate for a hot water heater for the jail. I think this is, we've replaced a couple already, but this, we need to replace this one. The bid is eleven thousand one sixty-one twenty-four and there's eighty-eight thousand of just.
So it's, tell me that again though, it's, how much is the total?
Eleven thousand one sixty-one twenty-four.
And then how much do we have in jail?
Eighteen thousand.
Oh, good, so that's most of it.
It's from the blue state of Columbia. It's a, it's a commercial water heater. It's been, it's been a while since we've had one, I think that was going around.
Alright, we have a motion from Commissioner Wiley, do we have a second to purchase a water heater for the jail? Second from Commissioner Rogers, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Alright, we'll move to item number seven, which is discuss employee bonds. Leanne Stedham, Young County, Young and Stevens County Community Supervision and Corrections Department, five thousand dollars. Motion from Commissioner Wiley, do we have a second?
Sure.
We have a second from Commissioner Crestwell, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Alright, this is gonna be a fun one, this is a presentation of a war, I'll invite Ms. Anne Street to come on up.
Judge, thank you very much for allowing me to do this in here for the Commissioners. I also want to say thank you to Ronnie Renshaw, Carter Pettit, and to the chamber for helping me with this. Dorman, will you please come forward? Dorman, thank you for supporting me today. I, I told Norman, I said, I have something I have to do at Commissioners Court, will you come and support me today?
Ah.
So I'm sure he probably.
Like a supporting animal.
Yeah. Anyway, so I have this for you and what it is, is I'll read to you. The first Texas Navy came about in eighteen thirty-six as Texas declared independence. The ensuing fight against Mexico made clear the need to fight on the Gulf waters. Texas acquired four ships which became the Texas Navy. Their mission was to block supplies to the Mexican Army while keeping Texas's supply lines open from New Orleans. These efforts were successful and in fact prevented Santa Ana from receiving supplies and troops, thus aiding in the victory of San Jacinto. The current, uh, by, uh, eighteen forty-five, the Texas Navy was absorbed into the US Navy. The current mission of the Texas Navy was brought back by Governor Proclamation in nineteen fifty-eight. That is to preserve and promote the historic character and heroic acts of the Texas Navy. The Admiral of the Texas Navy is awarded to individuals who exhibit these qualities and is based on exceptional community service. It is the highest award that the governor can present to a civilian.
Oh, wow.
And the citation says, "In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, to all to whom these presents shall come greetings. Know ye that Dorman Lee Hollab is hereby commissioned an honorary admiral in the Texas Navy, with all rights and privileges appertaining thereto and with the duty of assisting in the preservation of the history, boundaries, water resources, and defense of the state. And testimony whereof, I have signed my name and caused the seal of the State of Texas to be affixed at the city of Austin this thirtieth day of April eighteen, April twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four, Greg Abbott, Governor. Congratulations, Admiral."
Yeah, Admiral Hollab.
Admiral Hollab, there you go.
That is awesome.
That's pretty cool, thank you so much.
And it's very pretty, it's all colors and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, Dorman, Ann's been working on this for a while.
Well, you know, I may be a first in Young County.
I think you are, well, I have had lots of help behind the scenes trying to get this.
Well, thank you.
You're very shy about giving out information. So anyway, we appreciate you, Dorman, and want you to know how important you are to our community, to me personally, but to also to our community in our county.
Well, I appreciate it.
You make a big difference.
Well, thank you, thank you.
You've helped me there, Dorman, I know you've helped me a ton, I, I'm so thankful for you, thank you.
Well, you know, it's ironic, on the way here, I thought it was gonna be late because I was walking to the courthouse and someone called and said, somebody told me that you would know where the true schoolhouse is located. And, and I said, where are you now? And they said, well, I'm at the entrance of the true cemetery. And I said, if you'll just turn around, see that building in the field? And they said, yeah, and I said, that's the true schoolhouse. And they go, oh, okay. There, what do you know? Thanks so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. I don't think the rest of our business could be that much fun. We will move forward without our apple. Um, item number ten, ratify, oh, I'm sorry, item, item number nine, discuss and consider extending adult probation's deposit time for daily deposits. Local government code one one three point oh oh two is the governing document here. What do we have?
So for Young and Stevens County, we're supposed to have our daily deposits in daily. And if not, if that can't be done, then it's supposed to be. And, um, in the event that, that, if you're spent a key or not even to make that deposit. And, and.
Well, let's do it now.
Okay, um, and then I go over to the Stevens County office one day a week, so in the event that I'm not able to be there and to prepare those and deposit those, um, we have to ask the Commissioners Court to extend that time period and it may not exceed fifteen days and that should never happen. I mean, it's never gone past fifteen days. So I'm just sort of, I'll say that time be extended.
So, alright, so what it says is, county officer or other person who receives money shall deposit the money with the county treasurer on or before the next regular business day after the date on which the money was received. If this deadline cannot be met, the officer or person must deposit the money without exception on or before the fifth business day after the day in which the money was received. And then however county a fewer than fifty thousand habits, Commissioners Court may extend that period during which funds must be deposited with county treasurer by a period that may not exceed fifteen days. So the guideline is five, but small counties can go up to fifteen.
Um. If you're Young County. And I'm not necessarily sure on a particular time period, I was just more of a blanket.
And so explain exactly why, why, why does sometimes that five days become challenging?
In any event, like, well, in Stevens County, if I'm not there, if I miss a week.
Oh.
Then, um.
Yeah.
Then I would go past that and for over here, it would be if our director and our assistant director, if they're gone. Because no one's here to deposit on those days and then we don't work these weekends.
Gotcha.
And, um. I don't, we should, yes.
Well, I, I mean, I don't have, this is just kind of a safety net for vacations and, you know, sometimes, you know, people, with, with small staff, sometimes they, they kind of get shut down because of vacations and stuff. I don't, I don't have, I don't, I don't see a problem in this, I, you know, surely we would never hold it fifteen days, I mean, that.
No, I, my knowledge, I don't think it's ever been much of that.
Yeah, but, um, I, I have a problem with it. I, I'd be happy to make a motion to allow the, the fifteen days and if it ever becomes a problem, we can, we can take that away. Alright, so I made a motion, we have a second from Commissioner Crestwell, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, appreciate you. Alright, item number ten, ratify contract for the renovation of the Texas Assessor Collector's Office to transition into the auditor's office from level five architecture. Ms. Roberts is presenting this, if, if you remember, well, she's probably not presenting it. If you remember last week, we had this and it was gonna be an add-on to the previous contract and Commissioner Rogers asked it to be separated into its own contract. And so we did that and I think we've executed it correct. Yeah, so we're just, it's been executed, I just want to ratify the standalone contract, um, that we have. So we have a, a motion to ratify, so we have a motion from Commissioner Wiley, do we have a second? We have a second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Motion to ratify passes five zero. Item number eleven, discuss and consider bids on an energy service contract or renewing with T H U, Ms. Roberts?
So I tried to get an update this morning, he sent me this last Friday, so this is when we see. The last time we got an update on it was on the twenty-fourth and he did get with T H U and they lowered their bid.
Nice.
Tremendously. And as long as I'm here, it didn't run out, but even if we went out, because this only goes sixty months. If we went up to seventy-two, it was, right now, they're just right there with the others, um, actually Shell's higher. BP is like hundreds of cents, a lot smaller, but, um, seven, it's seventy-two cents and I think I'll get that, I think it was.
But it goes out, you can do it even further?
Yes, and he told me that these are change, these rates are seventy-six.
Seventy-eight, six-nine.
Did I, oh, good.
Seven, six, eight. Seventy-two months.
So it was, then it was right there with the others at that rate, so, um.
Oh, four, oh-seven, eight, six-nine, zero.
In sixty months is point oh seven nine.
Gotcha, so that, that's a pretty small difference, but, but seventy-two months is point oh seven eight six nine, in sixty months is point oh seven nine?
Yeah, I don't even think they gave the other ones for seventy-two. Yeah, the others wouldn't do it. BP was like point oh seven six five five, Shell was point oh eight one, uh, Inver, it was point oh seven nine nine, even higher.
You wrote a six-year contract that way?
We had, the last time we did it with T H U, we had a five-year contract. It took about a year to get our account straightened up. But we finally have everything except the annex, it's still not on our, you know, the, the working plan, so.
And that's how you win now.
So that makes a motion, we'll go to any of them.
There, there's no government issue with us doing a six-year contract like that, is there?
There's nothing wrong with doing it, but the law's gotta be in house. And all these contracts have an out.
Do government contracts have outs like that?
Yes.
For any reason?
Of course, it has to have.
So like, so if the price dramatically lowers, we can get out?
You can get a birthday notice and get out.
Okay, well, let's take the seventy-two months, how do you think? So you made a wide motion?
Yes.
Second, second from Commissioner Crestwell, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero, thank you for doing that.
You gotta keep the building the whole way up there.
And it's changing, it's always difficult.
I was proud that you stepped up.
Okay, item number twelve, discuss and consider the Texas Association of Counties Health and Employee Benefits Renewal. Marsha Sumter has discussed that with me and she, she wants to renew with TAC. She's kind of shopped it around, she thought that was the best, she came, that was the best thing. Unfortunately, she's not here to present, but, um.
Did she say?
I do think we do have some deadlines on this, so.
We do, and wasn't it like a four percent increase?
Yeah, yes.
We've been lucky in the last several years with TAC that for some reason, Young County's been pretty helpful.
Well, part of it also is that we're doing a really good job and I say we, the collective we, I'm gonna clip myself in there, but it's really, it's Marsha. Marsha does a really good job of managing the healthcare at the jail and, you know, coming up with alternatives that.
Safety Sumter.
Safety Sumter keeps our costs down, um, and as part of that, we're getting rewarded by a, by a very reasonable proposal. So she does, I know we say it all the time, but she does a great job. So we have a motion for Commissioner Wiley to renew with TAC health and employee benefits, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We'll move to the heavy machinery portion of our meeting. Ratify, item number thirteen, ratify contract for a twenty-twenty-five Mack truck through First National Bank, Commissioner Wiley?
Yes, uh, we got with Stuart, so everybody, yeah, finalized them, uh, they're playing good.
Alright, are you making a motion to ratify the contract?
Yes, sir.
Alright, Commissioner Wiley made a motion to ratify a contract for a twenty-twenty-five Mack truck, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Crestwell, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item number fourteen, ratify contract for the Young County bulldozer through the First National Bank, Commissioner Wiley?
Same thing with that, we gotta set up a three-year payout and if we're anything, we have left over.
It's roughly seventy thousand a year, is that?
Fifty-seven.
Yeah, so it wasn't such a budget for that, you know, for the next three years. But it'll be a brand new bulldozer. To be used for our B F Ds and in four road projects.
We got driver ready to go, truck entered, and you just like, tell us to come pick it up.
Yeah, this is one of my favorite things that we've done here. So Commissioner Wiley, are you making a motion?
Yes, sir.
Alright, we have a motion from Commissioner Wiley to finance the bulldozer through First National Bank, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Crestwell, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item number fifteen, ratify contract refinancing a twenty-twenty-one Mack truck through First National Bank, Commissioner Wiley?
I took and get one of my twenty-ones, so it's got been sold on like two thousand of them and replaced it with that, but it's got a free two-year plan, I have a motion to offer that for about this twenty-two thousand one.
Alright, Commissioner Wiley, excuse me, Commissioner Wiley made a motion to refinance a twenty-twenty-one Mack truck, do we have a second? Second from, who was that?
Me.
Commissioner Shook, second from Shook, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Move to item number sixteen, discuss and consider trading a twenty-twenty-one John Deere six-seven O G P for a twenty-twenty-four one forty M cat as a cash deal presented by Commissioner Rogers?
Yes, we started this deal back in, uh, July, I think, and, uh, we got a new cat, so, back here, Carter.
Sir. Good morning, Carter.
Better than Carter?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, he got in and, uh, made the deal and we actually made, it's been through Commissioners Court already and passed the deal, but it got delivered last Thursday, and he delivered the new one, picked up the old one. You know, we went through the bidding process on the old one last meeting and we accepted one cat trade-in, um, so, uh, all we're just gonna do is, uh, ratify contract, I guess, Carter's here, I guess, needs hundred-dollar bills.
Wonderful, so.
He's got that in his budget, too.
Yeah, and we had a bus because we pulled this deal back in, uh, July. It's just like the truck deal, we never imagined that it was gonna be extended this number of months. So even on, on our truck financing, you know, our banks kind of throw to a chute, too, I got, I got a truck deal next and, uh, you know, they didn't want to stand behind the interest rate on it till it closed it back in July.
Okay, are you making a motion to, uh, trade those two vehicles in a cash deal?
Yes.
Alright, we have a motion from Commissioner Rogers, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Crestwell, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Just, just make note, Carter is the new governmental salesman for one cat, I would still call his office.
Welcome and, and nice to meet you.
Yes, sir, you as well, thank you.
Looking, looking forward to incredible deals. Alright, item number seven, discuss and consider purchasing a twenty-twenty-five Mack truck and trade in a twenty-twenty-two Mack truck being, the I N number zero one two three, financed through American National Bank, Wichita Falls, Commissioner Rogers?
Yeah, we're still working on the paperwork, trying to get the paperwork.
Yeah, I got it, so.
Uh, they trying, changed personnel up there in their, their department and this is, we, we got a two-truck deal but only one of them came in, the other one will be in in July, but it'll be the same paperwork. So this is another thing, I got financed through these two trucks and this is one that, and, uh, we argued about the interest rate but, you know, American National Bank, they're not figured it was lower than First National, so I stayed with them.
What was the interest rate?
It's somewhere near somewhere.
Six twenty-five.
Name realization schedule is.
So it's six two five ninety-nine and five, but I made the deal on the hold-up, took my order, they just, I'll let it do theirs. So, but anyway, when you calculate more than a barn, you calculate the, the dollar table, it takes, it takes it in there and that, uh, First National's interest rate.
Okay.
First is five point eight nine, First National, I don't.
Five point eight?
Yes.
I think it's six and a quarter.
Okay, are you making a motion to do this? Alright, Commissioner Rogers made a motion to purchase a twenty-twenty-five Mack truck and trade in a twenty-twenty-two Mack truck through, financed through American National Bank, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor? Any opposed? That'll pass five zero. Alright, let's see, discuss and consider requesting sealed bids for a twenty-twenty-one Mack truck for precinct four. Bids must be in the auditor's office by four PM Friday, June seventh, at twenty-twenty-four. Bids will be opened on Monday, June tenth, at ten AM, this is Commissioner Wiley's item?
Yes, sir, we tried the, the two other governmental bids through auctions and didn't get very well results and, uh, gonna try to do this bitch and see if I can carry that little bit, pay the high seller, uh, buyer's fee, we'll go with him.
Alright, so is that a motion?
That's a motion.
It's a motion from Commissioner Wiley, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Alright, discuss and consider gov deals auction, which will close on nine AM on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four for a two thousand and three international precinct one, two thousand freightliner precinct one, and a two thousand and one Mack truck precinct. for a two-thousand-and-three international precinct one, two-thousand freight liner precinct one, and a two-thousand-and-one Mack truck precinct four. This is what we were checking yesterday, by the way.
Yeah, I came down and checked it, yesterday, answered a few questions, and this morning, they're hitting again with questions, and up till nine o'clock, they were asking questions. I haven't got the printout, but the two-thousand-one for precinct one was sold for twenty thousand fifty dollars. The two-thousand-and-three international sold for four thousand nine fifty-one. And then the two-thousand freight liner sold for seven thousand eight fifty.
One of them had a seventy-seven dollar bid to start the sale.
Two of them started seventy-seven, seventy-seven fifty, and so they gone from seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents to seven thousand eight fifty. And like I say, the, the buyers bring in, even for GovDeals, it's like twelve and a half percent. So that may be why a lot of people on the truck or something won't do it, but on these, they, they like the good overview ones, so.
Bargains.
The bargains.
Alright, do we have a motion to accept extreme auction results? Motion from Commissioner Wiley, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We'll move on to item number twenty, discuss and consider applications permit to install an entry culvert in the county road right-of-way ditch line for the Rossarange Road, this is Commissioner Cresswell's item.
Yeah, we had a couple of calls the other day needing a culvert in a hurry, they sold their place in Arlington and, uh, had till thirty to get out, and they needed to be able to move all their stuff here, and they were still signing paperwork on the property at the same time. So, uh, they bought the culvert, and we've installed it, and hopefully we get it approved now.
Being a little awkward and redundant.
I should take it out.
I lost the permission for what I worked on.
Who wants to have a little fun with Stacy today? I hear no motion. We have a motion from Commissioner Cresswell, do we have a second? We have a second from Commissioner Wiley, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Well, at least I'm being honest.
Item number twenty-one, discuss and consider applications permit to install an entry culvert in the county road right-of-way ditch line for Lyndale Hawkins on Sam Hawkins Road. Commissioner Wiley?
Yes, he's, uh, got an interest there, he's sticking one in there, they built a little barn medium out there.
Wonderful, is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Alright, so item number twenty-three in your packet is the executed. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, I do, once a meeting, I do that. Item number twenty-two, discuss and consider application permit to install two entry culverts in the county road right-of-way ditch line for Ray Reeves, uh, three, four, five, Humphrey?
Humphrey.
Humphrey?
Humphrey.
Humphrey, Humphrey Road and Jaden Lane Road, this isn't the subdivision we did, is it? Those are the names you ended up with?
Well, uh, Jaden Lane is one of the names, the main road one out to two-seventh. And the other one is right there on Pumford Road, they're both on Pumford Road.
Is Humphrey Road an existing road that's in there for one? Okay. Alright, presented by Commissioner Wiley.
Yeah, he got them, and he already bought them and everything, and, uh, everything ready to go.
Alright, we have a motion from Commissioner Wiley, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Cresswell, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Alright, this is what I was trying to get to, item number twenty-three, I have in here, in your packet, the executed First Amendment tax abatement between Young County and Plug Power. We approved it at our, we had a public hearing, and then we approved, approved the contract, but it has now been executed, and I'd like to run it through the commissioners' court so that we could ratify the new agreement, but it was signed, um, who signed it, the plug, Gerald Conway Junior. Yeah, old Junior. Title secretary, but do we have a motion to ratify the First Amendment tax abatement contract with Plug Holding Company LLC? Motion from Commissioner Wiley?
Uh, I'll be, nah, I'll take it.
We have a second, we have a second from Commissioner Cresswell, y'all can settle it in an Indian leg wrestling contest after the meeting. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Alright, dun, 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 budget calendar. I have two budget calendars, pass that down. Pass that down. You got one, I'm gonna keep one, anyone else like a budget calendar? So, nerded out on it a little bit, and, um, Nathan Craddock, and, uh, was it?
Tom Green.
Tom Green County, he, he's kind of the state kind of go-to on, on this, he, I, I've used his calendar as kind of a go, as a kind of a guide on it, but, um, I put a calendar together with, um, and all the different codes and stuff. We've got a question to help us kind of figure out where these rules come from, but basically, starting weekly, starting next week, if we want to start next week, we just handed out all the budgets, um, request forms to everybody, we handed them out last week. I haven't, I need them back yet, um, which I'm not expecting to get them back, and they'll start coming in this week. But I have it scheduled to meet weekly with the exception of July fourth, and the goal would be to have our public hearing and vote on the tax, tax, vote on the tax rate and vote on the budget on August thirteenth. So we're shooting for, or not August thirteenth, August, no, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page. Yes, you're correct, August twenty-sixth, yeah, we're going paper on the thirteenth, so on August twenty-sixth, hopefully we'll be done. That, that's the goal, to be done with budget, we also have put multiple dates in September, we have till September thirtieth, so we've got some, if something happens and we get derailed, we've got a month to, um, to fix something. My question is, does this sound like, I mean, we can accelerate, we can do it sooner, we can do it later. You'll be going on Monday, and then, and then.
On June seventeenth, I'll be on here.
Okay, so Shook out?
Vacation.
Vacation.
So, I guess, like, there's multiple questions here, the first question is, does, is anyone, is everyone comfortable with the timeframe? I know you, I know you haven't had a chance to review my calendar, but, um, as far as kind of the ending date, are we comfortable with it? And then the other question is, we do have a budget workshop on this calendar, this calendar is scheduled for June third. Commissioner Wiley won't be here, I've just sent all the budget request forms out, so we don't necessarily have to start on June third. I mean, I'm okay not doing that one, if we don't want to do that one. So, would you like to say we not do next Monday? And then we, that we have a budget workshop on June tenth after commissioners' court, as our first meeting? Alright, we will not meet next Monday, uh, we should have plenty of meetings in here to do it, I, um, I've gone around to most of the counties around us, and, um, I am convinced we spend more time on budget than any county around us. I mean, a lot of counties do it in two meetings, they have two workshops.
Two vote.
Yeah. Well, I think it's great that we, we go through it line by line, I actually, I, I liked how we do it, I learned, I learned, I don't know about you, but I learned a lot last year when we did it.
So I'll have the printouts for you, I mean, I guess you want paper printouts to write on, plus I can email it to you. I'll have those ready for you this week, whenever you want.
Okay, so do we have a, okay, I will make a motion that we accept the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget calendar as presented, and that we will not meet on June third, so we will start it on June tenth. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Cresswell, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Rate them in? Okay, alright, that's, that's the priority this year. Okay, so item number twenty-five, discuss and consider the Texas Association of County Health and Employee Benefits Full Board of Directors Special Election Ballot. They, uh, they sent us this ballot, and they're asking us to vote on a board seat, and they have nominated honorary Ellen Owens, who's the Bastrop County Tax Assessor Collector, she finished her second term, and so. Yeah, so she, uh, the nominee is, is a woman who's finishing up her second term, and so they're asking, uh, for us to vote on her to get another free year term. You know her, Ellen Owens? We could write in somebody.
No, I don't, I know.
We're like, Anne, do you want me to write in?
Yeah, I, I.
I know the auditor there.
I think I heard a nomination. Alright, do we have a motion to, um, to cast our vote for Ellen Owens? We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Shook, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item number twenty-six, do we think we want to enact a burn ban after the hurricane of this morning? Alright, no action?
We had a little fire on a lobster yesterday, though.
Yeah, I did hear about that. Yeah, it's basically someone started a fire and then left it unattended, I mean, it's dry enough, it's dry enough now, but if you're not responsible, you can start a fire, and it was literally someone started a burn and then went home. Makes no sense, but we, um.
No action.
No action on that. Would someone like to adjourn or recess? Motion from Wiley, second from Shook, all in favor? Alright, we're done.
Harley showed me how to turn the camera.
Oh, good, yay, you know what, let me see how to do it.
Good.
I should have this.
No, you stay away from it, you don't touch it. So she says, be sure and hit both buttons. Is that on or off?